Loving Heavenly Father, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together, and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther and to be the best that we can be. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. I know it's an exciting evening. First, now officially call the meeting to order and go to item one, which is the appointment of a canvas committee to canvass the city of Harlingen May 7th general election for the positions of mayor, commissioners District 1 and Commissioner District 2, and special election results for charter amendments A, B, and C. So I'd like to ask Mr. Remy Garza, County Elections Administrator, to come forward and present the results. The city commission will act as the canvas committee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners. On behalf of Cameron County, I want to thank you all very much for entrusting us with your election. I think we kind of went through some growing pains at the beginning of the process, but once we got all on the same page, I think everything worked out pretty well. It has been a goal of the Elections Office to engage these contracts so that we can provide a consistent service to the voters of Cameron County and the individual communities. Before you, you have a canvas report that will be unofficial until you officially take action on it. It's in three parts. There's a block canvas report that will indicate each of the precincts by polling location, as well as the candidates and the overvotes and the undervotes for each one of those races. The second section includes the summary, and then the third section is the actual breakdown for each of the precincts or polling locations for the race, that you can see the individual votes for those particular ones. Generally with the canvas, what we would do is we read off the summary report to provide that to all the individuals on the committee. So overall, there were 37,416 individuals that were eligible to participate in this election. Of that, 6,130 cast ballots, which gives you a turnout percentage of 16.38 percent. 3,996 individuals voted during the early voting period, 428 participated by mail, 1,695 participated on Election Day, and there were 11 provisional ballots that were ultimately accepted for the election. And primarily, those provisional ballots were individuals that had applied for a ballot by mail but decided that they wanted to go and vote in person as opposed to returning the ballot by mail. So for the office of Mayor City of Harlingen, Norma Sepulveda had 3,668 votes, Chris Boswell had 2,394. For Commissioner District 1, J.J. Gonzalez had 374 votes, Richard Adiva 432, Ford Kinsley 452. Commissioner District 2, Nick Concilio 218, Ernest Ernesto Sistetos 225, Daniel Nemesio Lopez 347, Frank Puente 103. Proposition A for the city of Harlingen in favor was 3,730, against 2,105. Proposition B in favor, 4,445, against 1,433. Proposition C for, 4,377, against 1,486. So that concludes the canvas report unless there are questions from the board.
Are there any questions? Then we'll go to item two, which is a consideration of possible action to approve a resolution declaring the results of the city of Harlingen May 7, 2022 general election for the position of mayor, city commissioner District 1 and city commissioner District 2. Is there a motion to approve the resolution in accordance with the Elections Administrator's report?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item three, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution declaring the results of the city of Harlingen May 7, 2022 special election charter amendments A, B, and C.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. And item four, swearing in and the oath of office to newly elected Mayor Norma Sepulveda.
My name is David Gonzalez. I'm the judge of Cameron County Court, Law Number 3. But mostly, I wanted to thank Mayor Alexa Puglia for giving me the distinct honor of swearing her in today. I grew up in Harlingen. Back when everybody went to the same high school, so coming here today feels like coming home. So thank you. Would you please raise your right hand when I repeat my name if you need to. I, David Gonzalez, solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of mayor, of the city of Harlingen, of the state technically, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this day. So long live that.
I just, I want to thank everybody for coming out today. I'm truly humbled I haven't turned around to everybody. So this is a historic moment. I try to enjoy the moment, and I know that some of you are as well, so I appreciate you being out here tonight, and I appreciate everybody that, you know, is watching live also. This has been a long journey, and I just want to thank everybody that helped me to get to where I am, all of Harlingen, spoke on Election Day and voted for change, and I'm humbled to be that person to bring it to the city of Harlingen. I want to thank my husband for bearing with me over the last seven months, my husband, Eric, my two boys, Eric and Evan, and my incredible dad for helping me along the way. And most importantly, you know, the Lord above that gave me the courage and the strength to continue on even when it was difficult. And last but not least, my mom that's up in heaven, but I know she's with me every step of the way. So I appreciate every single one of you. I pledge to be mayor for all of Harlingen. I said that from day one, October 20th. I stood outside these desks and I looked up at the mountain here in front of you, inside the building, and I plan to do that. So I hope we just work together to make Harlingen a force. I'm excited to work with the commission. And lastly, I want to thank Mayor Boswell over here, who has many, many years of service and all that he's done for Harlingen and his community as well. Thank you all.
We got work to do.
Thank you.
So it looks like they put you to work right away. So next on the agenda, we have a plaque for Mayor Boswell for his many years of service. An appreciation award and grateful appreciation for your many years of dedication and commitment to the betterment of the citizens of Harlingen, Texas, from Mayor Boswell from 2007 to 2022, and his service as city commissioner from 1998 to 2007, to this day, the 18th day of May 2022.
A few very short remarks. First, I want to sincerely congratulate Mayor Garza Sepulveda on her election as mayor of the city of Harlingen. And I want to express my best wishes to you for a successful tenure as mayor, and pledge my whole court, I urge everybody to get behind the new mayor and continue our progress here in our city. It's been a real privilege and an honor to serve as your mayor for 15 years and before that as a city commissioner, but it was also a great responsibility, which I took seriously the entire time. And I am immensely proud of the progress that Harlingen has made over the last 15 years, but I'm equally confident that we're going to continue to make progress in the city as we move forward over the next few years. And finally, I want to thank every one of the city employees of the city of Harlingen, no matter what position they have, department heads, our policemen and women, our firefighters, our sanitation workers, the people that unload the luggage at the airport, airplanes, every single job is important. They keep this city running, and they do a beautiful job, and they deserve a lot of credit. I just want to thank each and every one of them. Finally, I have to thank the most important person in my life, which is my wonderful wife, Anita Boswell. She's the best. She's the best. So with that, thank you all, and good evening. I'll see you around town.
So we have a very short meeting, and then we are going to go downstairs, and there'll be a small reception, so you're welcome to stay or you're welcome to hang out downstairs. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to consider tabling item six until, because we do have a runoff in two open spots, and until the, do we have a full commission?
Do we have a motion?
No, it's his motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion carries. So then we're, we need to vote? It's been tabled. Okay. Do we have a second?
We have a second. We need a vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're going to have to bear with me. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so do, we have someone, Commissioner Bettis, do you have someone you want to elect?
Well, yeah, no, if it's not tabled, then I want to, because it should be on a rotation, right? And what I want to do is nominate, Remy would be the next position, and then we'll go rotation forward. But I know that we had wanted to do it with a full commission, but that's okay. Also, I'll make the motion to elect.
If I may make comments, you're still the mayor pro tem, Richard, and you're still in office. And I think that the mayor pro tem should be appointed once we have commissioners in one and two.
Well, I agree with that, but it is the consensus of the, I don't want to make it seem like I'm fortunate to stay, right? But, and I thought that was the proper thing, right? I've discussed it with the city manager, right? But it is the will of the commission, right?
And there's no legal reason why the vote can't be taken and the mayor pro tem appointed.
Right.
There's no legal reason why the vote can't proceed and the mayor pro tem appointed.
So we have a motion and a...
So we have a motion and a second.
And a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is item number seven, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution calling and ordering the June 14, 2022, city of Harlingen special runoff election to elect two commissioners to the elective governing body, one commissioner for each of the respective single member districts, one and two, and other related election matters.
Mayor, commissioners, this is a resolution calling the special election for June the 14. And exactly what Mayor Sepulveda said, it's to elect city commissioner for District 1 and the city commissioner for District 2. Basically, what we're doing is we're following the contract that was approved between the city and Cameron County. Cameron County will be running the election. The first day of early voting would be March 31st, and it would end on...
May 31st.
Oh, May 31st. And it will continue until June the 10th. Applications for mail ballot may be sent to Mr. Remy Garza at the address indicated in the resolution, and the last day to submit an application for a mail ballot would be June the 3rd. Election day, the time for election day would be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. As far as the polling places for the early voting, we did attach an exhibit to the resolution, and the polling places that will be used for the early voting would be the Harlingen Cultural Arts Center, and that would be Tuesday, starting May 31st until June the 10th. And with the exception, I believe, of Sunday, is that correct, Remy?
Yes.
And the other polling place would be Harlingen County Annex Building, and it would be at the same time with the exception of Sunday. Anything else that you would like to add, Remy, on this?
Well, I think it's important to recognize that the timeframe between the canvas and the actual election is a lot shorter than what you would normally see from a jurisdiction. The code authorizes that runoff election to be called within 20 days to 45 days after the canvas is adopted. But because there's a special election for the Texas Congressional District 34 happening on June 14th, we thought it would be best, in the best interest of the voters, to align all the runoff elections with that particular election day, so that the voters aren't having to go on a Tuesday and then either the following Saturday or Saturday later participate in the runoff election. The polling locations that were selected by the Commissioners Court slightly differ than the locations that were originally selected by the city for its local election. For example, the Treasure Hills location is back to the UTRGV, and I'd be glad to go into more detail if there are specific questions about some of those minor shifts of going back to the regular locations that voters use during constitutional elections and general elections. Also, the early voting would only be, if you were going to participate in the Harlingen city runoff, you would have to vote in one of the early voting locations within the jurisdiction limits of the city, would be in the ones that are here. It's not going to be true early voting like we have had in previous elections. And I know there was some conversation regarding the addition of City Hall, because that's not a normal early voting location for us during a countywide election, but it's certainly one that you all could consider to add to the list. In looking at the turnout totals, obviously, the Cultural Arts Center was the largest percentage of voters went to that location, but then the second largest was your City Hall. It was about 14 to 15 percent for each one of those districts, because it's not a citywide election, now it's just those two, the individuals that reside in those two districts. So it certainly would make sense, I think, for the city to add City Hall as an early voting location for this election, because people are used to it, and they used it. So I think it's a, if you all wanted to consider adding that, we can make that happen.
So may I ask, what does it cost per early voting place and what does it cost per actual voting day for all the locations?
Well, it's, usually the cost breakup of an early voting site is going to be anywhere from $7,000 to $12,000, depending on the turnout, to fund them. But bear in mind that even with this county holding its special election, it's going to be sharing the cost for, and I'm going to be recommending to the court, to all three locations for this one. So it would only be about $6,000 to $7,000 at most for each of the early voting sites.
And you're calling for how many voting sites?
There's, I think there's a total of, that you all would be hosting, I think it's 14 polling locations.
And it's $6,000 to $7,000 times 14?
No, that's only early voting. During Election Day, it's a lot less. I mean, it's, you know, maybe $1,000 at most for an Election Day location, because there's fewer workers, it's fewer time, there's no overtime, but all in all, you know, you're looking for this particular runoff. I haven't actually crunched the full numbers on it, but, you know, if it's $23,000 to $22,000, I'd be surprised that if it went that high, just because of how big the other election is that's around you all, because you're really only doing two, the two single member districts that are having to be covered versus all of the city of Harlingen and all its precincts.
And then this, the recent election, the May 7th, what did that cost the taxpayers?
We're still working on those figures, you know, finalizing the invoices, but I think based on what I had seen applied to the general ledger at this point, we're pretty close to what we had estimated, if not a little bit under.
Which was?
I have to...
It was like $39,000?
Yeah, I think if I saw it more than $32,000 at this point, I would be surprised that it was that close, but it was close to what we had budgeted. I was hoping it was going to come in less, just because of all the other jurisdictions that held elections at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
I think your idea for the early voting, adding City Hall, is a good idea, because like you said, it's historically a location that people have gone to, and this election has proved that if you give people the opportunity to vote, you give them more locations, more time to go vote, they'll go and vote. Because I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but we approved, our voting turnout improved a lot considering the past couple of elections, or no?
Based on the statistics that I remember, since we don't have the voter history within our system, I generally remember the city of Harlingen looking at anywhere from a 3% to 4% to 6% turnout, and of course, this time it was 16. So it was a significant increase in the participation by the community.
Having said that, I'd like to make the motion to add City Hall.
I second.
Any other discussion? All of those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Whatever it costs, right, for democracy. Okay, so next we have citizen communication. Do we have anybody signed up for public...
We have, we have Raymond Reyes, and I believe he should be here.
He's downstairs.
He's downstairs?
I did see him.
Officer DeLue, can you call him up here, please? Raymond Reyes? Thank you.
My name is Raymond Reyes, 706 Nan Teck Drive. Basically, I just wanted to come out and make a short little comment that things are constantly changing, there's always renewal, every day is a new day to do something bigger and better. There's a lot of positive changes, in my opinion, that are occurring. We've been doing business here since 1976. It seems very apparent, since I've been retired and I'm around a lot more, that things are starting to move in what me and a lot of fellow business owners are thinking are moving in the right direction. So I'm hoping that we can keep making progress and not become stagnant like we have before in the past. Again, we've been here, doing business since '76, so I've seen a lot of different things occur, but again, we learn from our mistakes, we just keep moving forward, we don't hold any grudges, at least I don't. This is something I learned from the Japanese a long time ago. And we just get it done, no matter what it takes, one day at a time, not just for ourselves, but for the better and the good of the citizens of Harlingen. And that's because I'm from San Antonio, my base of operation. But I've learned to love Harlingen and the Valley. There's a lot of good things. Harlingen still, I believe, has a lot of potential to do a lot of good things, and, you know, let's just keep moving forward and make it happen for everyone. Thank you very much for your time. You all have a good afternoon.
Next, we have, item number eight is proclamations. The first one is for Public Works, National Public Works Week. So this proclamation is for National Public Works Week, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as drainage...
Officer DeLuca, can you call him up here, please? Raymond Reyes? Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Commission, Mayor. Congratulations. My name is Raymond Reyes, 706 Nan Tecca Drive. Basically, I just wanted to come out and make a short little comment that things are constantly changing, there's always renewal, every day is a new day to do something bigger and better. There's a lot of positive changes, in my opinion, that are occurring. We've been doing business here since 1976. It seems very apparent, since I've been retired and I'm around a lot more, that things are starting to move in what me and a lot of fellow business owners are thinking are moving in the right direction. So I'm hoping that we can keep making progress and not become stagnant like we have before in the past. Again, we've been here since, doing business since 76, so I've seen a lot of different things occur. But again, we learn from our mistakes, we just keep moving forward, we don't hold any grudges, at least I don't. This is something I learned from the Japanese a long time ago. And we just get it done, no matter what it takes, one day at a time, not just for ourselves, but for the better and the good of the citizens of Harlingen. And that's because I'm from San Antonio, my base of operation. But I've learned to love Harlingen and the Valley. There's a lot of good things. Harlingen still, I believe, has a lot of potential to do a lot of good things, and, you know, let's just keep moving forward and make it happen for everyone. Thank you very much for your time. You all have a good afternoon.
Next, we have, item number eight is proclamations. The first one is for Public Works, National Public Works Week. So this proclamation is for National Public Works Week, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday life, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as drainage, streets and highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, water and wastewater, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Norma Supulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through the 20th as National Public Works Week. In the City of Harlingen, I call upon the citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
She doesn't bite, guys. Okay, you can get a closer look. I don't care what her husband says.
Thank you, guys.
So this proclamation, whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Harlingen Police Department, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, and the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 619 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021, and 147 officers killed in previous years. The service and sacrifice of all our officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 34th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2022. And whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which we will be observed, which will be observed this year, May 15 through the 21st, 2022, and May 15, 2022 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and honor all fallen soldiers and their families, and US flags shown to be blown at half-staff. And whereas it is important that all the citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies, and members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against repression, and by protecting our national security. Now therefore, I, Norma Supulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby call upon all of the Harlingen citizens to observe May 15, 2022, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Police Week. We publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which our community may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. From the bottom of my heart, I want to thank the Harlingen PD, and I'm sure everyone here in the audience does, we appreciate everything that you do for all of us, you know, we know that the job is difficult, but we all appreciate you this week and every week. Okay, so next is item number nine, approval of the minutes, consideration and possible action to approve the minutes of the April 20th, 2022, regular City Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, the consent agenda is items 10A through 10I on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, item number 11, consideration and possible action to approve the request from Cameron County Election Department to use the Cultural Arts Center, Liberty Hall, located at 576, 76th Drive, Harlingen, Texas, as a voting site for the Democratic and Republican primary runoff election from Monday, May 16th through Friday, May the 20th, and the City of Harlingen special runoff election for early voting beginning Thursday, May 31st through Friday, June the 10th, 2022.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, we had a request from the Cameron County Elections Department to be able to use our facility, the cultural arts, for the election on the dates that you read. Staff is recommending approval.
Any discussion?
Do we have to add the City Hall in this area? It's already been done.
It's already been done.
It's already been done, just for this building?
This is a different one, I think.
It's a different one?
Different one.
This is for the primary?
This is for the primary, yeah, they're on the same dates.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 12, consideration and possible action to approve, to appoint Frank Morales, City Commissioner to the Amigos del Valle Board of Directors to replace Commissioner Rini Bettis.
Mayor, Commissioner Bettis asked if we could replace him with Commissioner Morales, who's agreed to take on the position. They have their meetings at 10:30 during the day, and I've asked if they consider having him at 5:30, but it didn't get any traction, so I recommend that we approve the item and appoint Commissioner Frank Morales to replace Commissioner Rini Bettis.
He looks a little surprised.
That's what he wants, right?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Finally, item number 13, board appointments.
I have none, ma'am. I have none, Mayor.
Yeah, I want to reappoint Pam McGurk, Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board, reappoint Norman Rozef Museum Advisory Board.
None? Rini?
I'm going to appoint Elizandro Muñoz to the, to the Museum Advisory Board.
And I have my first appointment, Jessica Hernandez, I don't know if she's here. Maybe she's outside. Jessica Hernandez served in the Air Force for eight years, and it's my honor to appoint her to the Veterans Advisory Board.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that adjourns our first meet, my first meeting.
We're going to have a small reception downstairs, so if you wish to join us downstairs, we'll have cake and cookies for everyone.